What's going on fam? This is the day the Lord has made and we're here to rejoice and be glad in it. I want to thank you so very much for tuning in to the Hope TV on today. It is my personal hope and expectation and prayer even that you're blessed today, that you're happy and most importantly that you're safe. I want to thank you so much for tuning in and it is my fervent expression of appreciation to each of you for your support. As you know, we've been doing media for a long time and we started this platform to offer some information and some content throughout the pandemic. First broadcast was on March 19th. It was called pastoring the pandemic and since that time we've come from one show to over 22 shows per week. Offering content that speaks to us from a spiritual, physical and a mental emotional space. So I'm just grateful to you for your support and I want to thank you for that. Since we started the first 30 days, we had over 5 million views through our cumulative platform. So I'm thankful to all of you for your support. It's been mind blowing. Those of you who are viewing us through Apple TV, Roku TV, Twitch, Facebook, YouTube, Periscope, those are watching on the House of Hope Atlanta website, edoussmith.org website or the House of Hope Atlanta app. However you're viewing, let me thank you for your support. It means the world to us. Drop us a line. Let us know where you're watching from city, state and country as we take your demographics seriously. And we want to offer you content that's unique to your specific demographic. So thank you. If you've not yet followed us on all things social media, you can follow us at the Hope TV. On all things social media, you also can follow the House of Hope Atlanta on YouTube, on Facebook, H O H A T L on Twitter and Instagram. And you also can follow me at edoussmith on Instagram and Twitter, Fisher Page of Pastor Edoussmith on Facebook and Dr. Edoussmith on YouTube. So thank you so very much. I appreciate your support. Our team is working diligently to ensure that we bring you some positive content. As a matter of fact, many of you have just Netflix yourself to death almost. And so to have something else that's unique and specific to what we are as a community means a lot. If you're watching through a platform that will allow you to subscribe or like or send the link, please do so right now. Because we want this episode of Town Hall. That's what this show is. This is our Town Hall Show. We're excited about it because today is a powerful show in that it's going to address a lot of things that affect us. We really want to bring you empowerment and we know that information is power. Scriptures teach us that people perish because of a lack of knowledge. And what we want to do today on this episode of Town Hall is bring you some knowledge that can be impactful to each of you. Today we have a very powerful guest who's sharing with us. She is a native of the state of Kansas. Grew up as the daughter of an entrepreneur in the finance industry and so has had a love for finance perhaps her entire life. Moved here to Atlanta, became Vice President of SunTrust Bank and was doing incredible climbing the corporate ladder. And then became the first woman to be named as the CEO of the DeKalb County Chamber of Commerce. The first in the history of the DeKalb County, which we know is significant, especially when you know the history of the DeKalb County. Just an incredible feat where she was responsible and charged with bringing a whole lot of things that dealt with the economic viability of the DeKalb County. The third most populous county here in the state of Georgia. And in September of last year, she was appointed by the 60th Mayor of Atlanta, Mayor Keisha Lance Bottoms, to be the CEO and the Director and she's the head of the WorkSource Department here in the state of Atlanta, where she's responsible for helping to ensure that everybody has an opportunity to the economic pie, economic viability, job training, bringing about economic opportunities for those who are in need. And so just a resource in terms of finance, business development and economic viability for her constituents. And we're excited today to have Sister Katharina with us today. Katharina, how are you doing with us today?
Well, thank you so much, Dr. Smith. Thank you so much for that introduction as well. I'm excited to be a part of the show of knowing how many people and lives you all are touching. To have a platform to talk about workforce development, to talk about economic viability and economic mobility, especially for some of our most sensitive populations in the city and across the region. So thank you so much.
Well, you know, you are, your reputation precedes you as a mover and shaker here in Atlanta and here in Georgia. The things that you've been able to accomplish are absolutely legendary. So tell us about Katharina Taylor. How did you get from Kansas to here? Just tell us your story. I kind of prepped it a little bit, but I think that's important for people to hear your journey, your story.
Yeah, thank you so much. So I am from Kansas, but I've been here in Atlanta for about 17 years now. My father actually was a grocery store owner, but from Arkansas, eighth grade education. So entrepreneurial spirit is running my family. And my mother from Oklahoma, again, limited formal education. She had a 12th grade education. So you've got two poor people coming from the country size of Arkansas and Oklahoma trying to build a family and a business together. And so I learned good work ethic. I learned finances because I was at 11 years old. I was running the register and making deposits to take to the bank. And so went to college in Texas, came here 17 years ago. And because I had so much exposure to banking, banking just felt natural as a small child. And so I was in the banking industry for about 15 years. And then that was working really, really well. Been about 10 of those years at SunTrust Bank here in Atlanta. And then I got promoted to the Chamber of Commerce in DeKalb County. And I was recruited there to manage their memberships and increase their revenues. And so then there was the opportunity to identify who the next president will be and be a part of that team to do it. And who knew that I would be the person that would then become their first woman president and CEO of the organization in its 86 year history now. And so that has been an amazing thing, but in that process I've learned that, you know, what my father taught me, great work ethic, advocating around education, workforce development and economic development. It all, you know, came, it all helped when I started to run the chamber. And then obviously that got the attention of recruiters and Mayor Lance Bottoms several months ago. So I'm very excited now to be a part of the city because I also know that there's a regional approach to workforce development. So it's not just about the city of Atlanta, but all the other surrounding counties and cities that depend on the economic development of all of us, right? It depends on how we're driving businesses to come to Atlanta, but also how we're helping to sustain those same businesses to make, ensure people are being employed and staying employed. So I'm excited. It's a lot of hard work. People think that just because we're working at home, that we're not working. We are definitely working a lot because we know what will happen after this, you know, post pandemic will be very different than what it looked like pre pandemic. So I'm excited to be here. Thank you so much.
I want to ask you one question. I think it's so helpful. Last week we did a lot of business highlights on the platform with the church, particularly with African American women. We know that Atlanta is the leading city in the nation in terms of African American women who are entrepreneurs. I want to kind of tap into that in just terms of gender inequality, et cetera. You know, with your role in DeKalb County as the first president, the first woman president, you know, in 80 plus year history, what kind of obstacles did you find, kind of obstacles? How was that experience in terms of going into the good old boy network? And making the changes, doing what you were having to do? What was that experience like?
So it was, it was sometimes challenging to get in the right rooms. Not just to get into the right rooms, but to be heard when you were eventually invited into those rooms. Knowing that the tradition was these are the people that are always in the room and here comes this young woman. And more so a young woman of color, right? So there's, gives you a completely different, you know, perspective as well. And so it was always challenging. And so I started to, at some point towards the end of my career at the chamber, when I would walk into a room, I would either sit at the very head of the table or take a seat at the head of the table. That always got people's attention. And so that was always helpful. So it was a challenging role to have, but it was a very rewarding role to have because I knew that I was helping lots of people, entrepreneurs, women, people of color. And so it was rewarding, but challenging.
I'm sure, you know, when you talk about helping women in small businesses, you know, we've heard a whole lot about what's happening in terms of the economic crisis that's imminent. The worst economic climate since the Great Depression and its impact on small businesses across the world, in particular those in America. You know, when you juxtapose those things with the, you know, financial crisis and real estate losses, commercial real estate losses, you know, and banking issues. What has been your experience in terms of small businesses getting the, you know, the assistance from the government? Do you recommend that? What has been your experiences? What kind of stories have you heard about it thus far?
Well, I think, you know, there are the national stories that we hear on the news that there was all this economic assistance. You have the payroll protection money and then of course the additional dollars from SBA. And what we know now is that most of the large corporations got a lot of the money and small businesses were neglected in the process. So that was hard news to hear, but we now know that that's what happened. And so how do we move forward? The one thing that I know pre pandemic is that a lot of small businesses were not prepared financially. Not that they didn't have reserve, but from an administrative perspective, did they have P and L? Did they have things that legitimized their business from the beginning? Were they working with a bookkeeper? Were they managing those things to be able to quickly turn around what was required of them by the banks and the US government to ensure that they got a piece of the pie? So that was some of the things that I heard with my businesses. They just weren't ill-prepared. The other thing is even if they received some of the money, a small piece of the money, I always tell businesses, you know, capital and cash flow are two different things. And Dr. Smith, what I mean by that is somebody can give you $100,000. When you're going through that $100,000 through payroll, overhead, operations, whatever it is, but if you don't have cash flow coming in or consistent revenue, then cash flow and capital are two different things. You go through that capital very quickly, even if you have to repay it, right? So capital and capital are two different things. And right now our businesses don't have cash flow. So we're having to quickly course correct and figure out how to bring a business online. Do you have the platform, the equipment, the know-how to even do that? You know, they say small business can be very agile and agility in a small businesses is important. But the know-how is, I mean, you know, as much as I do, most small businesses know how to do their business. They, whatever they, if they're selling trinkets or offering services, but running a business sometimes can be very different, right? And so it's, that's been a challenge of a lot of small businesses, understanding capital and cash flow are different. Understanding how to quickly turn a boat around in a bathtub, right? That's what it's been feeling like to small businesses. So they, and some of them, while they got, like I said, the assistance from the government, it may not be enough. And it has not been enough. So it's, we have to be quickly innovative out of necessity. And oftentimes we haven't been as innovative as we could have because we've been comfortable running our businesses. We've been comfortable operating inside of our businesses because that's what we're used to doing. We have to look at going forward, a 30,000 foot view of our business. What does our business look like from up here? And when we're looking down, we can see some of the pieces that are missing. And sometimes those pieces that are missing means I've got to go get help outside of what I'm capable of doing. And so, so I've been praying a lot for small businesses that those are the things that actually keep me up at night. Because most of, about 80% of the country is employed by small businesses. So you think it's big corporations, but really it's small businesses that are employing America across the country. So we need them to survive.
You know, it's amazing that you said that because you know, I think Mayor Bottoms has done just a magnanimous job in providing leadership throughout the pandemic. And it's unfortunate that we haven't seen that en masse in terms of state and federal leadership. And we know that Georgia is one of the first states to do a skeleton reopening. And that's created quite a quandary for those of us who made to Atlanta and really cross the state. Because a lot of businesses are having to really decide between humanity or economy. What is your message to those businesses now? I was talking to my barber who's trying to contemplate on how to reopen and what that reopening looks like. And because the state's now been opened up, he has no recourse in terms of the commercial lease that he's in. Because now the landlord is really going to be requiring lease payments on a monthly basis because the state is now open. What has been your perspective? What is your opinion? What kind of solutions or advice would you give in that regard?
So that's, that's really hard because what you said, you know, you have to make a choice between humanity and economy. And when you start getting into those types of questions, you really never thought you'd have to answer that question as a small business. You know, you were serving people, right? And that's what you, you created your business to do, to meet and need with people and not to choose, you know, humanity versus economy, right? And so that, that's a hard question, but I would tell small businesses, it's been what, two, almost two, a little over two months since the shutdown, or right about two months, I know since the city shut down. And you're missing income, you're, you know, you're having to be able to feed your families. You want to make sure that you're providing as much stability to your families at this time, even if you have students. You don't want them after war. You want them to go ahead and get school out of the way. And there's so much that we're having to think about that we didn't have to think about before. So while I will tell you, our mayor says, you know, we want to continue closing our businesses. And I know our governor has very different views along with the gentleman who's running our country as well, has very different views. So I would say as a small business owner, you really have to pray about it. Is there, ask God to give you an idea that you didn't have before that can help meet your financial need? And your family's financial need that will also allow you to keep them safe, keep yourself safe and healthy? And still maybe have a connection to your customers. Oftentimes we're so busy in our businesses, again, we're not ideating, we're not innovating, we're not thinking because we don't have time. We're tired after we've worked in the business all day. But we do want to continue to keep people safe. If you have to reopen your business, what's the best way to keep people safe? You know, social distancing, I understand is something that all businesses are starting to do. But we may start seeing, you know, you're serving two and three people a day. Well, it may cost you more to run your business as opposed to serving those three people, right? So you really have to be thoughtful about talking with your bankers over the phone. What does it look like if I go back to opening my business? How many people will I have to serve? And if you know, if I've got to serve 20 people in order to make rent and overhead and pay myself, then what does that 20 people look like in a month or in a, in a week? So it's time to really start putting some pen to paper and really strategizing, but don't do it by yourself. Figure out who can help you with that because this is the time where we need to be reaching out to each other and then asking for help and delivering help when our neighbors call and say they need you.
That's great. You know, it's so helpful. You know, you said, you said a lot about, you know, you're working at home now and work low. People think you may not have assistance, the city is closed. How has COVID-19 affected you and the WorkSource department? What's different and what's increased?
So we, so for your viewers who may not know, so I run the WorkSource Development Agency for the city of Atlanta. And our job is to ensure that we're getting people trained and we're identifying job placements for people. How do we get people employed? How do we get them trained? How do we ensure that the workforce is a viable workforce in the city of Atlanta? And also understand that across the state, there are 19 WorkSource Development Board. So there's also one in DeKalb and some of the other counties. So you could reach out to those different agencies, but for us, we're on the front line. You know, there were, there are 20 million corporate jobs that were displaced. 33 or more million have filed for unemployment. And so how do we identify those who are already underemployed, those who are unemployed? And now those who are dislocated, meaning they were let go because of a reduction in force from their companies. So we're answering calls all the time. And then of course we have students. People tend to forget that there are students that were working to help their families. Not they were going to school and they were working part-time jobs, some of them full-time jobs. And so how do we also support those students? So we've got a lot of people that we're having to think about. So let's start with the dislocated workers. For those workers who were let go of a huge corporate job or even let go from a very small company. It could have been a restaurant or a small business. While I know this is a very uncomfortable time, it is, it is still a time to think about reinvention. And reinvention means what do you see for your life after this, right? There are resources to help you do that, but also you have to know that there's, we're not, there's a lot of resources available, but you have to go get them. And you have to be thoughtful and intentional about how you're going to move post pandemic. So I tell people all the time, it's time to reinvent yourself. Pastor, you opened up with saying, you know, where there is no vision, the people will perish. You've got to have a vision for yourself. And so with WorkSource, for those who are interested, have been displaced or unemployed or underemployed, what do you see yourself doing? WorkSource across the board will pay $7,000 for any program right now that you want to go be training in. Whether it's a certification, whether it's some place where you feel like, okay, I need to up my skill set. You know, I was good at this, but now if I added this layer to what I do now to my resume, I'll be more marketable post pandemic. Or have you thought about starting your own business and what does that take? What skill set are you lacking? Let us pay for it, right? We want to be able to cover the cost of that. Additionally, for those that are going through a program, whether it's a training program or a work experience program, and I'll share that with you as well, we're also covering supportive services. So let's just say you start a training program and they say, well, you need, you know, you need equipment, you need a laptop, you need all these things. We're able to cover the cost of those things. And I think that's really important for people to know because they don't know that we exist. Or they know that we exist, but they think that, oh, that's for a different population of the community. No, we are for every population of the community. If you are unemployed, underemployed, you've been dislocated, you are a youth, 14 to 24. We have, we have services that we want to offer. There are budgets that we have that we want to ensure that you're getting what you need, what you need. So training is available. They can go to our website and they can see our state training providers. From truck driving to IT, to healthcare, to professional services. There are lots of high demand careers that we want to make sure people are aware of and that they can choose. And they have choices and we want to make sure that they know they have choices. We also have a program called Work Experiences. And so I want to say this to your audience who are small businesses or businesses who have been able to really shift during the pandemic and probably could use some additional payroll help, but may not have a budget. We have a program called Work Experience where we partner with businesses where we'll cover the cost of an employee for 90 days. We'll cover transportation, we'll cover childcare for those who are needing childcare. We'll cover if you need uniforms or equipment. We'll cover all of that for the employer so that the employer doesn't have the liability of onboarding somebody for 90 days and they don't have what they need. Our goal, Pastor, is just to remove barriers to a workforce. If there is a barrier that you have, we want to try to figure it out. We want to try to meet your needs, both you and the employer, so that we can get you back employed. And so we do need employers. We need some other businesses that say, you know what, I could really use two people. We'll cover their salaries for at least 90 days. So it's a lot.
Incredible. Yeah, that's incredible. I mean, and I've never heard of most of what you just shared. And I call myself fairly lucid in terms of trying to stay abreast of the resources, but this, I mean, this is incredible information. So employers who could qualify for your program, what will be the prerequisites or requirements in order to be eligible?
So what we only require employers to do is we have what we call a work experience application. And the goal is within that 90 days that they have taught or trained whoever we've sent over to work for them a skill. And it doesn't have to be a hard skill. It could be customer service. It could be how to run a business. It's, this is a time to get, to get creative and thoughtful. If you are running a bakery, then you know, it's, it's customer service, it's managing online sales, it's marketing. How are you teaching a skill to somebody that can take that same skill after 90 days? Put it on a resume and become a viable part of the labor force that's going to be available post pandemic. So it's a fairly easy process for small businesses or businesses that are interested and we'll walk them through the process as well.
That's absolutely amazing. That's amazing. Wow.
Yeah, we, we want the help.
Go ahead, please.
No, I was going to say, we want the help. We definitely want to help small businesses, but they will be helping us tremendously to get people back to work, at least temporarily back to work.
So it's worksourceatlanta.com, right?
Worksourceatlanta.com.
Any business out there? Wow. Let me ask you this question. Relative to the workforce and the WorkSource and departments that you've been helping to subsidize, is there any particular area that you think is more recession proof, I guess, or any areas that you think? Jobs or positions that are able to sustain themselves throughout the pandemic in terms of a skill set? Or a particular business, something as people think about reinvention and recreating themselves, reimagining life post pandemic? Are there any particular areas that you think have more viability to them?
Well, certainly during this time because it's a, it's a health challenge of pandemic. Obviously healthcare workers on every single level that we can think of are viable. That, that is definitely has obviously been a recession proof position or industry. You wouldn't think so, but even PDL, trucking, you know, these groceries are flying out the shelves faster than probably they've flown out the shelves in decades. And somebody's got to drive those trucks back and forth to the grocery stores, back and forth to the warehouses. And so that's also been a pretty viable industry or position for people to have. It's, it's been interesting, Dr. Smith, because you know, we've been pushing people to IT and IT security. That's been interesting because we've never had so many people work from home before. We've never had so many people on our internet infrastructure, right? So sometimes you go up to a call and you're like, I can't get in and my internet's up and down. It's, and having organizations who had to pivot quickly to move their services or their business virtually needed IT people. Needed IT people bad to be able to, to get it done. And so IT has been, you know, one of those, one of those industries as well. So as you can see, three very different industries. So you know, if you don't have an interest in healthcare or driving, but maybe you have an interest in IT. Those, those three certainly, you know, are kind of the top ones we were starting to see. They have been viable through the pandemic.
Now in terms of, let me ask you a question about, I guess, real estate, you know, persons who've invested in real estate and who have empty buildings or, you know, is there any type of opportunity that they have for people who are in, who are in real estate right now? And in terms of how that may coincide or correlate with WorkSource Atlanta?
So that's been really interesting because I had a conversation last week just about commercial real estate. Because some businesses and some small businesses are going to see that now their businesses can be virtual and they can still meet the needs of their customers and clients. And they may not need that 5,000 square foot office space that they had before. So really shifting into something very different, right? So how do you repurpose a building, Pastor, right? And sometimes it's what is the need of a community? And if you're not plugged in, you don't really know. So if you've got a building now that's at, you know, 20%, you know, capacity or 20% full and you've got 80%, then this is me personally, and I speak on behalf of the city of Atlanta or anyone else, that you have to think about those businesses that are there now and how long will they be there? What do their leases look like? And if I'm in a community that needs more affordable housing, how do I repurpose that building if I wanted to get into the housing market? It's, I can't say this enough, it is, it is time to really reimagine and innovate the way we think. You know, how do you turn a commercial building into a housing unit? It's been done. We've seen it across, you know, the country, right? And housing may not have been what you wanted to do. And housing may not have been what you wanted to do. Um, but, and that may not be the only option for a, a, a building sitting empty. Maybe it's, you know, your local government needs some extra, um, some extra healthcare facilities. And right now, that may be the only, the best place for you to do is set up a, a temporary healthcare facility or emergency COVID healthcare facility for, uh, the government where your building is located. So thinking about those things, but, um, I say oftentimes, if you're a small business, if you're a commercial realtor and, and you're, you're the business owner, you own the business, it is really time to go back to the basics. My father would sit us all down and we'd have family meetings. What does a family meeting look like? You know, how are we using and leveraging our families to really think through some of the most difficult times that our families and our businesses are seeing? Are we asking the right questions? Do we have the right information? And if we don't, how do we get it? And those are the things, at this point, even your ten-year-old who knows how to use a computer, you put them to work. And I will say then, you know, as long as it's a family business, um, child labor laws do not apply to your own kids. And so it's time for everybody to get back to work. It's, it's time for everybody to contribute to the survival and sustainability of businesses. And so a commercial real estate is one of them. I think they're going to have to be really thoughtful about how they come back out of this pandemic and maybe it's also working with those emerging businesses. Um, I would, as, as if I, if I owned a building, I would think about what are those, uh, emerging technology companies that are going to be created because of this pandemic? Will they need space? Um, will they need warehousing? How do you again repurpose your building? And so, um, it, it's time to start thinking outside of the box.
Wow. This has been, you have been absolutely resourceful and I just want to thank you for taking time, you know, to share so much. I mean, it's been powerful for those who are watching, whether you're looking for work or whether you're an employer who has needed some partnerships. This is incredible. You know, if you had to give one, you know, word of, of encouragement or support to people who are trying to find work, who are fearful about what's going to happen now post pandemic, because we really don't know what's going to happen. They're talking about a second wave of the virus happening, a vaccine may be still a year and a half, two years away. You know, um, with your experiences and what you, what you're seeing professionally, what would you advise us to do, uh, those who are watching, those who need work? You've given so much already, but I just want to give one last word of encouragement, support, admonition, warning, uh, counsel coming from you to those who are watching. What would that be?
I would say, um, don't leave any rock unturned. You know, um, there are too many rocks out there. You've got to keep pushing and get to every single last one of them. Flip every last one of them over because that last rock may be the one that has all the resources that you need. Or multiple rocks may have many resources and coupled and collected together, um, will be the answer to what you need. So, uh, keep fighting. Um, you know, this is, th- these are hard times for everybody, but you just have to keep going because there's an end to it all. And we'll get to the end together. Um, just, just be mindful of, of, of your mental health. Um, and just keep, keep going, keep turning and turning every rock, every rock.
Uh, Ms. Caterina Taylor, you are an absolute jewel and you are a model. Thank you for your leadership. Uh, thank you for just the insight and wisdom and most importantly, your time. Because I can only imagine how incredibly busy you are today. But to come and share with, with you know and what you have with our audience, we just want to empower people because it's, it's difficult, so much anxiety and fear. And sometimes, as you mentioned earlier, people struggle mentally because they don't know what they're going to do financially. And so the resources that you've given, the insight, the counsel that you've given today has been beyond invaluable. And we are, I mean, sincerely grateful and appreciate to you for your sharing with us today.
Well, Dr. Smith, I appreciate your time and this platform and being able to share all the great resources with uh, your listeners and subscribers. Thank you so much for what you are doing. Um, this is so impactful and so important. And I, and I hope you understand, um, how important it is. Um, so thank you so very much. I'm very grateful, very appreciative. Thank you very much.
Uh, those who are watching, uh, whether you're an employer or want to be an employee, uh, there's a resource, some powerful information that has been given to you today. Go to worksourceatlanta.com, peruse the site, uh, go through with a fine-tooth comb, find what applies to you. Because this is a resource that's invaluable. It can be certainly of, uh, improvement and empowerment to our community. I want to thank you. You've been watching our special edition of Town Hall today through Hope TV, uh, with the director, I don't know, the director and the person who's in charge, who runs the WorkSource Department for the City of Atlanta. And, uh, that's a major position and doing some major, major things. Hope that you were like a sponge, that you were giving that insight and that wisdom and that counsel so we can be better. Uh, we're going to make it through this. Again, thank you, Caterina Taylor, for being a part of our conversation today. I really appreciate you. And those who've been watching, I hope you've been inspired and encouraged and empowered. It's tough, I gotta admit that. It's difficult, but we'll, we'll get through it. With the grace of God and a good plan and a good perseverance, we will survive this. Got to log off now, close off now. You've been watching Hope TV Town Hall. Always remember this, if you'll be good to God, then God will be good to you. Until next time, peace. God bless.